This meeting is called to order at, what's the official time?
Seven oh five.
Seven oh five. Councilmember Lawson, will you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, a God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Which will be followed by a invocation led by Councilwoman Michelle Starr.
We gather here today as members of this council entrusted with the responsibility of serving our community and advancing the common good. We ask for your wisdom, effort, and compassion as we deliberate and decide on matters that affect the lives of our fellow citizens. May we listen respectfully, speak honestly, and act with integrity. May we always be mindful of the values and principles that unite us as a people. As we began this meeting, let us prosper among us as citizens who reflect on our purpose and our vision. Let us remember we represent the challenges they face and the hopes they have.
Amen. Beautiful. Thank you. At this time, I'd like to make a motion to excuse Mayor Brian Poole from tonight's meeting. May I have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay.
May I have the motion?
I did. Okay. Follow, all eyes. Followed by roll call.
Esther Boyd.
You're present.
Rosemary Brown.
Present.
Vinnie Chandler.
Present.
Pamela Fitzgerald.
Present.
Robert Lawson.
Present.
Jill Starr.
Present.
Okay. At this time, we'll have a reading and disposal of previous minutes.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the seven ninety two twenty three special council meeting minutes with any necessary corrections.
I'll second.
All eyes.
Aye.
Is there a motion to accept the special council meeting? Minutes. I'll make a motion to accept the special council organizational meeting minutes from January ninth, twenty twenty four. Is there a second?
I have a second.
All eyes.
Aye.
At this time, I'd like to approve the agenda. If anyone, uh...
I'll second it.
Okay. Are there any appointments, confirmations, or presentations tonight? Having none, we'll go right into petitions, comments from the public. Madam Clerk is getting the, I'm sorry, the list, and she'll read off. Mm-hmm. Who signed in?
Mayor, we have Kenya Nelson.
Okay. Come on up, Ms. Nelson, and state your name, which we already know, but just for the official record, your name and your address.
My name is Kenya Nelson. I stay at fifty-seven forty-two St. Elmo in College Hill. I just want to put a face to a name because I have put in my liquor license for the line. I look forward to working with you all.
I do. With liquor license for what business?
Springdale Road is for... Make the pipe.
Okay. Okay.
If you give us more information, yeah, more information.
It's one zero zero...
Seven five.
Seven five. It's, right now it's named Doobies, and I'm okay with the name.
Okay.
Only because we have new people on our, on our council too, so...
Yes, ma'am.
Very familiar. Michelle, that's why we have, she has questions too.
Yes, ma'am.
Any other questions from council? Go ahead.
So, when is the opening?
Actually, I already applied for my license and I got approved. I all, I do own another bar that's in Coraine, so I have two years' experience with a bar. And I have a hearing Friday to see before.
A hearing for the liquor license in the state, uh, in Columbus?
No, I have a hearing here.
Oh, here?
Yes, ma'am, for Friday.
Oh, okay.
It's here.
Okay.
Okay.
And your name again?
Kenya Nelson. Yes, ma'am.
Any other questions from council? Village manager?
Nope.
Okay. Ms. Nelson, I'd like to thank you for coming out and introducing yourself to us. I know it's been a long process, and as Ms. Fitzgerald said, we do have new members on council. So, we just don't want to assume what one may know, so those are the reasons for the questions.
Don't worry.
All right. Thank you. All right. Oh goodness, committee reports. Well, that's...
You're the only one, ma'am.
I know.
And so you'll need to do the first part since you've done that before you do the first part and lead the rest of the tax part.
Okay, yes. So, bear with me. We will, the committee for this month is the Finance Committee, which met on January the twenty-second. The members present were myself, Ms. Pamela Fitzgerald, and Ms. Michelle Starr. Also present were Tim Engel, Ashley Madden, Charles Willis, Rosemary Brown, Esther Boyd, Robert Lawson, and Mayor Poole. Mr. Willis provided a income tax update, and the, just bear with me. The village collections are seven hun, seven hundred twenty-one thousand, five hundred twenty-three dollars and ninety-six cents, which was an increase of twenty-five thousand, eight hundred and thirty-one dollars and ninety cents from the same period last year. That equates to a four percent increase. In twenty twenty-two, we reached the seven million dollar mark for the first time ever. I think that deserves a round of applause. We continue to climb higher in twenty twenty-three. We have collected eight million in income tax for the first time ever. Our year-to-date collections as of December thirty-first, twenty twenty-three are eight million, one hundred seventy-four thousand, four hundred and thirty-eight dollars and sixty-three cents, compared to December thirty-one, twenty twenty-two of seven million, nine hundred and seventy thousand, one hundred twenty-one dollars and thirty-one cents. Additionally, the road tax collections for the month of December twenty twenty-three are ninety-four thousand, one hundred eleven dollars and eighty-two cents, compared to ninety thousand dollars, seven hundred and four, nine, ninety thousand, seven hundred and forty-two dollars and forty-four cents, which is also an increase of four thousand. What? Mm-hmm. And so, the tax, the total collected is seven hundred twenty-one thousand, five hundred twenty-three dollars and ninety-six cents for the total amount collected for the income tax. And I will save the rest of the Finance Committee meeting to our outgoing incoming Village Manager, Finance Director, Mr. Engel.
Appreciate that.
All right. So, that's all for that committee report. At this time, we'll move right into the Municipal Managers' Report.
Absolutely. So, just some updates for the month of January, Juneteenth, twenty twenty-four. The village had its first Juneteenth meeting on Friday, the twenty-sixth, which was attended by the village department heads, Councilmember Brown, and the members of Call of Play. The team discussed the event as well as activities that may occur leading up to Juneteenth. We will have further discussion on these items at committee of the whole. Call of Play is planning on attending to answer any questions. So, as part of that meeting, there were certain items that we discussed, you know, certain events that could happen leading up to the Juneteenth celebration itself. And so, we'll kind of talk about those, what they could look like, whether or not the village wants to do any of those things. Lee Crest Road and Redna, Redna Terrace and Chester Road update. We actually just received the documents related to the bidding for Redna Terrace and Chester Road. February fourteenth will be the deadline to, will be the bid opening for those bids at one o'clock PM here at the village. So, really excited to get that project moving. I know the businesses are excited, and that's, that's a great deal. Just to remind everybody, the, the Redna Terrace and Chester Road project is being funded through OPWC grants, as well as interest-free loans, as well as an additional grant from the Ohio Department of Transportation. Clemens Nelson started with us in the month of January. Jacob Booth is our representative. Jacob is here every Tuesday and Wednesday through the end of March, and then after March, he'll be here twice a month. So, he's doing, trying to get through all of our HR stuff. He's going through the personnel files, helping us write some policies. He is actually working on assisting the police department with their job applications as they're looking for two new officers. So, he's moving right along. Lawn and leaf pickup, Public Works believes they can provide lawn and leaf pickup services to the village again. The Public Works Director provided me with a tentative schedule related to leaf and brush pickup, and we'll kind of go over that schedule and review it. There's some other things that we're looking at to help facilitate that schedule, potentially cutting, contracting out some of our grass cutting. And there are other things that we're looking for Public Works to do this year, which is help out with some of the landscaping. So, we want to make sure that we don't overwork those guys, that we can get everything done and make the village look beautiful.
Excuse me, uh, do we, you are contracting, you haven't, you don't have contracts set already for the lawn?
I do not. So, we're, we're kind of looking at that information, trying to get a, get a good idea of whether Public Works can handle all of it, or whether we want to go ahead and farm a little bit of that out, take some of the pressure off of them. The village is working on obtaining quotes for a chipper shredder to help facilitate with the brush pickup. There's a grant opportunity for that equipment that we'll be pursuing. Baseball fields, the village, the village was propi, I'm sorry, the village was provided with a proposal from Team All Sports to deal with the field drainage issues last year. That proposal last year was twenty thousand dollars. I contacted Team All Sports Friday of last week to obtain an updated quote and to be added to their book of business this year with the goal of having the work done before baseball season begins. Ronnie Road and Woodstock timeline, obviously that construction was paused for the winter months. That will pick back up when the weather breaks. There's some other additions to that work that we will look at, either before that construction begins or when they start back up, some of which includes the ditches on the sides of the roads. We want to make sure that those are filled up a little bit so that it doesn't lead to potential accidents. And there is a, an addition of a, a right-of-way to a specific lot as well that needs to be added. So, we'll be looking at that stuff as we get back into the, into the construction season again. Recreations Department program analysis update. Ms. Brown has scheduled the first Recreation Committee meeting on the sixth of February. We are also looking at job descriptions to add some staff to the Recreation Department. These positions were recommended to us by Prose Consulting. I do have draft positions for those, which were provided, I believe, in the, the January update, the organizational meeting. But we also forwarded those to Clemens Nelson for review. As soon as those are ready, we'll go ahead and forward them to the Law Director for Review and Legislation with the goal of that happening in February, so we can start to move along with that. The Recreation Director will also attend the Ohio Parks and Recreation Conference in February. The conference includes several educational sessions and networking opportunities that will benefit the Director and the department. So, again, that was another recommendation from our analysis. Recreation Summer Camp, Derek Edwards from Call of Play has agreed to the MOU presented by the village. Camp Coombes determined that it would find a different place to hold their camp. The Law Director has completed the MOU for Vacation Camp, which is Derek's camp, and it will be on the agenda for approval tonight. Hamilton County Revitalization Grant, again, we have the houses up on Springfield Pike under contract for purchase. I spoke with the owner of those properties, actually, today. The homes, one of the homes will be vacant by the second week of February, so that's good movement. The last home will only have one individual left in it, and they'll, they're working on relocating him so we can close that deal and, and keep moving along with those properties. The Springfield Pike and Gruninger Way improvements, again, the village received a one point two million dollar grant from Sorda to make improvements to Gruninger Way as well as Springfield Pike. I've met with CT Consultants to discuss this project on several occasions, as well as Dan Ferguson with Alloy. We are still working on right-of-way acquisitions for some of the sidewalks. We'll continue to make progress on this project and keep council informed as to a project start date. That's actually one I just spoke to, to Joey Hood at CT Consultants about. Now that we kind of have Chester and Redna kind of taking care of and moving forward, I will start to put all of our, our energy into getting Springfield Pike and Gruninger put together and started. We want to get that, that project started this year. As a reminder, Sorda also gave us funding to construct sidewalks on Glendale-Milford Road. That timeline will probably begin in twenty twenty-five to see biddings. That's kind of the way the timelines for these run. We did receive a thirty-five thousand dollar We Thrive grant. This funding will be used to continue programs established, that we established last year, such as swim classes in twenty twenty-four. Our salt barn is still under construction, is continuing to move, is continuing to move forward. The company constructing the barn did put up a temporary salt storage tent, we'll call it, for Public Works in case there's snow. That's worked out quite well. All of our salt has been delivered, so we're not, we shouldn't have any salt emergencies. Our flock cameras are, will be installed here soon. Flock is, needs to do a little bit of work with ODOT to install some of the cameras up on Springfield Pike. They seem to have everything in place to work on that, as well as a contact, so kind of waiting for them to get all their contracts and everything in order with ODOT. We should see those cameras installed soon, which is great. Monica, I'm sorry, am I, am I going too fast?
No.
Oh. Gotcha. Regional Safety Complex, I don't have any new, new updates on that, but they did state that the new complex in Colrain Township should be constructed by the middle of the end of twenty twenty-five. So, that project is still moving. Our former village manager is part of the team in Hamilton County that facilitates that project, so I, I have a lot of faith in it. Tri-State Trails, as we've discussed in the past, they are trying to connect a trail network throughout Hamilton County. The village contributed to a feasibility study related to the trails. I attended an update meeting on the twenty-sixth of January, where the team reviewed the walkthroughs and performed at various communities. Steps to move the plan forward related to the trail will include a public input plan, which is planned to be released in February or, or March of this year. A project website and project notifications to be released in March, as well as an open house and online public meeting to be held in April. So, they are moving along with the trail plan as well. And that's, again, that'll allow for bike and hike trails to be connected throughout Hamilton County. It'll be a great amenity through the county. I know people that use the ones here, and Woodlawn, as well as Wyoming, really enjoy them. Yes.
When you say Woodlawn contributed to a feasibility study, contribute at how?
I'm sorry?
When you said Woodlawn contributed to the feasibility study?
Yes. Financially, yeah. We contributed, and I, I believe it was seven thousand dollars towards that study. Along with several other municipalities, by the way, our neighbors and friends all contributed to that as well. Canoes and Conversations, the Mill Creek Alliance, as we've discussed, would like to bring Canoes and Conversations to the village of Woodlawn. We're planning on having the event on June the first, and we're continuing to have meet, and we're continuing to have meetings about Canoes and Conversations. The next meeting for Canoes and Conversations will be at three o'clock PM on Friday, the fourteenth of February. They've scheduled additional meetings to occur in April, as well as May. The February meeting will take place at the Woodlawn Recreation Center. And that event will take place, that'll be a joint event with the city of Wyoming. The plan right now is for those that wish to canoe to start here at North Park, excuse me, to start here, uh, at, in the Mill Creek, and then paddle to North Park in the city of Wyoming, and they'll be shoveled back. Neighborhood Allies was here, in the month of January. Neighborhood Allies is a non-for-profit group that offers assistance with filling out paperwork or entering information into web portals through various social programs offered by the county, state, or other entities. They also assist people in obtaining state IDs, expunging records, and obtaining mental health services. The group will be here every second Friday of the month at the Woodlawn Recreation Center. Again, they were here in January. They had a really good experience. They're looking forward to coming back on February the ninth. So, again, Neighborhood Allies will be here February the ninth. They'll start at eleven o'clock, and they will continue to provide services to anybody that comes in, Woodlawn residents, but really anybody that we call in Zone fifteen in the four-five-two-one-five area, zip code, is kind of what we expect to show up. Fire Department continues to aggressively pursue opportunities related to transport services. We've reviewed certain draft contracts. We've also been provided with quotes from our insurance company for this service. Everything is moving along favorably. The village did acquire a very nice used wheelchair van last week to help provide these services. When I say it was a steal, it really was. About half the price we thought it would be.
Nice.
That van was checked out by our friends at Forest Park Automotive. They saw no issues with it. We're also going ahead and having the actual lift mechanism just checked out and inspected by the company that does the, the lifts and the ambulances, excuse me. And so, we'll make sure that that has a good bill of health before we put it into service. But again, that's another step forward. We do have job descriptions on the agenda to be approved for the transportation services. It'll be resolutions tonight. And our goal is to have draft contracts for services reviewed by the end of February. So, we're hoping to go ahead and move this thing along. We discussed, or it was noted to council previously, that Valley Interfaith over in Lachland is doing a lot to try to assist folks that are coming into the United States from West Africa. The original thought that was perhaps the Woodlawn Recreation Center may be asked to be utilized to, as a, as a place to facilitate classes to help these folks learn to speak English. Paula has been on top of that and talking to the folks at Valley. The folks at Valley are still trying to solidify those classes. Once they kind of have an idea of a direction, we can have further conversations about how Woodlawn can assist if necessary. But Valley did note that they are in need of men's clothing for these, for these individuals. So, if, if anybody here, anybody watching, has new or gently-used men's clothing, you can drop that off at the Valley Interfaith Community Resource Center at four-twenty West Wyoming Avenue in Lachland, or you can drop it off at the Woodlawn Recreation Center, and Paula and the team will see that it gets to the Valley Interfaith Resource Center. So, they're out there still doing really great work for the community.
Just men's clothing?
Uh, men's, I mean, they'll take anything, but they specifically said they are in need of men's clothing. So, shoes, you know, hats, coats, pants, shirts, things like that.
May I add for anyone watching or listening that Landmark Tru, up in Glendale, has those items available for Woodlawn's, Valley's, and all of them?
Absolutely.
They have clothing and food available.
And actually, Councilperson Starr did email that information to me as well. I passed that on to John Keith Rover at Valley Food. He was very grateful for that. So, I think they are, they did reach out to Landmark at, at some point, and they're trying to facilitate that as well. But yeah, absolutely. Everybody is trying to help these folks out. Okay, great. I'll send that over to them. Grove Avenue Purchase, the Law Director drafted a purchase contract for the property on Grove Avenue. This contract is on the agenda for approval tonight. We're currently planning to use the land as additional community garden space. And sort of some buildings and other issues, there's a roof leak at the Public Works building. The roof was inspected by a roofing company. It was determined the roof should be replaced. The estimated cost to replace that roof by that company is eighty thousand dollars. So, we're working on getting some additional assessments, estimates for the repair. If other estimates are close to this amount, we may look into financing a larger amount of money to make major renovations and improvements to that property. There's a lot of stuff that needs to be done there. So, if we're gonna have to, have to save some stuff and do some stuff, we might as well do a couple of things and make it a little bit nicer. The village had contracted with Bushelman to replace one of the firehouse garage doors last year. That door has finally arrived over at Bushelman, and the door should be replaced soon. And just again, as an update, the village did resolve to create a school zone by the idea school. As part of creating that school zone, the village is responsible for installing the appropriate signage. The village police department is working with our friends at Capital Electric to determine the locations and type of school zone signs that need to be installed, so. Should be coming soon. That never goes as quickly as you want it because you do have to work with some of the, the energy companies and all that. But we're gonna get that up soon for the kids at IDEA. That is all I have to report as part of the Village Managers' Report, unless there are any questions.
Ms. Fitzgerald had a question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
First thing, I want to say thank you for your report. I remember when we first got started, a few years ago, for my term. This report was a little, you know, just a few pages, but now it's like eight pages. It's like huge. So, so many things, wonderful things are happening.
Thank you.
But I have a question in regards to the gun range.
Yes.
Do you know if they have hours? I know that I've heard some concerns in regards to the range.
Yep.
They've been utilizing it pretty late at night. And so, I was wondering if they, I thought it was like five or six o'clock that they said before, but I'm not sure. Can you look into that a little bit to see?
I will, and I, I seem to recollect the same kind of hours you do. They're not really supposed to be using it in the evening hours.
I know they have been, for sure.
But I will, I will look into the hours at the gun range.
Anything else, Ms. Fitzgerald?
I think that's it. Thank you.
Okay. Ms. McWilliams has a question.
Yeah.
Tim, when you talked about the road work, you started out talking about Lee Crest, Chester, and Redna?
Correct.
But I, I do recall as you went forward, you talked about Chester and Redna. What's going on with Lee Crest?
So, Lee Crest Road, there are additional things we're looking at with that. We received an OPWC interest-free loan to do construction on Lee Crest. One of the items we would like to look into on Lee Crest is some additional infrastructure to support public sewer. So, the team at CT Consultants is looking into alternatives to kind of help us with that. The goal is still to have Lee Crest started this year. We just, what we want to do is we're gonna, if we're gonna rip the road out, we want to make sure we do everything underneath it and then put a new road on top instead of having to go back and forth. But that is still absolutely one of the things we need, we're, we're looking at. And that funding is theirs, and we have to spend it on Lee Crest, so we can't put it anywhere else.
Okay. All right. Any more questions, comments regarding the Village Managers' Report? Mm-hmm. All right. Having none, we'll go right into the Finance Director's Report.
Sure. Pick off where Ms. Chandler left off. Finance Committee, the committee was provided with appropriations and revenues reports. The village collected a hundred and twelve thousand, I'm sorry, a hundred and twelve percent of budget revenues and expended eighty-one percent of appropriations. Receipts and expenses reports were also provided. As for the month of December, the village collected six hundred eighty-four thousand, two hundred twenty-seven dollars and fifty-nine cents, and they dispersed one million, one hundred twenty thousand, four hundred sixty-three dollars and thirty-two cents. Additional payments in December included a payment of five hundred and eighty thousand dollars to the Fred A. Neiman Company related to construction costs for Ronnie and Woodstock. General fund disbursements are higher than total village disbursements, where the village dispersed eight-eight percent of general fund budgeted expenditures and collected a hundred and ten percent of total general fund budgeted receipts. Fund balance reports, as well as the bank reconciliations, were presented at, for December thirty-one, twenty twenty-three, and then we also reviewed overtime salary expense and recreation's reports. Another item presented, and, and we had it as part of the pack, it's really been discussed it, was an asset forfeiture and restricted funds report. This is a report we do once a year related to certain specific special revenue funds related to the police department. That report will be up for approval tonight. Basically, these, these are funds that don't have a lot of activity in them anymore. I think they were established years ago, and the things that used to pay into them just aren't there anymore. But there is little, no activity in the funds. The only fund that still has a fund... The only fund that still has a fund balance, um, is Fund 2091 that has a balance of $364. That was the balance at the beginning of 2023 and it ended at the same balance. So, uh, that report is there and that will keep us in compliance, uh, with, uh, Higher Advice Code 291.13D. Also included in your council packets is the draft of the Woodlawn Meadows Special Improvement District. Also refer to that as Arnold Drive. Because of the way that was constructed, we have to do a financial statement for it every year. Um, that statement is then sent off to the state of Ohio to be audited. So that's the, that's the easy report I get to do every year. So that one's done early. But, uh, this one's just for council review. We'll actually review, we'll actually approve this statement as well as the village financial statement at the February meeting. That'll be our control for, uh, financial statements before they're shipped off to the state. And if there are no further questions, um, I'll just ask for the approval of the bank rec- receipt listing, payment listing, and asset forfeiture report.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the bank reconciliation, receipt listing, payment listing, and asset forfeiture report. Asset forfeiture report.
One second.
All eyes?
Aye.
All right. Anything? I'm sorry, go ahead.
I'm sorry. I was just, it was just the, uh, mayor's, uh, report which you were, I thought you were, I thought you were, uh, I thought you got lost, I'm sorry.
No, no, no. I was, I was watching, um, Ms. Yee-Hat, so I was just pausing for a moment. That's okay.
I apologize.
That's no, no problem. We have to keep each other together, right? Anything from the law director tonight?
Just a reminder that we should announce the appointments for the Charter, uh, Review Commission this evening, um, before the end of the council meeting. I know there was some discussion at the organizational meeting, but just to memorialize it in the minutes, we should have everyone, um, provide the name of the person that they have appointed to that commission. And other than that, I would just request that we have an executive session tonight to discuss pending litigation.
Okay.
At the end of the meeting.
So the first part of your request, um, Ms. Supinsure, my, I, I did receive some, um, names from council regarding their appointments, which were forwarded out. I did not receive names from everyone, so if we can, can we hold out until Cal?
So the charter provides that the appointments will take place in the month of January following the election, so.
Do you, so how should we proceed tonight? Do you want me, do you want us to announce?
Does, I guess, is there anyone who does not have a?
Hi, from my understanding, there was, uh, from, uh, information I received, there were two, I asked the question if they were going to be announced today and, uh, it was stated that there are two members of council, I guess, that have not turned in their designated.
Two members of council, but three persons.
Okay. That have not turned in their designated. And, uh, the hope was, I guess, the plan was to have it done in February.
But in order to be compliant.
Well, I mean. Can we announce the ones we have? I think we should go ahead and announce what we have and then we'll, we can fill in the remainder.
And there were some already announced in organizational.
We, correct. So we rolled those up. So if we can, um, do a, a roll call, Madam Clerk, and just go down the line and everyone state who they've chosen?
Ms. Boyd?
Erin Tillman.
The third.
Someone else picked him?
Rosemary?
No, I, my, my pick was too much more.
Dr. Paul Waller.
Tracy McCullough.
Delawson.
Okay, I suppose.
Her name is Gloria Thompson.
We just need a mayor's appointment.
Mm-hmm.
I think you're right.
Mr. Tillman, all right. Do you have another, a backup?
He chose Tillman as well.
That's what the minutes from the organizational meeting indicated.
Uh, Mayor, um, Ms. Mayor, wasn't there a discussion about that?
There was a discussion. My recollection was there was a discussion that ensued between you and the mayor and that's why there was nothing written, um, from your appointment or the mayor's appointment because it appeared that there was an ongoing conversation, so, um, I'm not sure. But in order to be in compliance, today is.
We'll just let the mayor know that he needs to make his appointment.
Right. And to be in com-
If he's able to. If he's not, I mean, that's understandable. He's been out.
And to be in compliance, if we have it by tomorrow, we'll still be in compliance as, at, by the 31st, so I think that will satisfy.
That'll be fine.
Our compliance issue.
I, I could, uh, suggest someone else, but I'd like to stay with Erin Tillman until this is.
That's fine.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Having nothing else from the, um, law director's report? Mayor's report, I have nothing but, uh, well, the mayor has nothing, but I'd like to ask for a motion to approve the mayor's court monthly statement in the amount of $26,433.04. May I have a motion to approve that amount?
I'll make a motion to approve it right now.
I'll second it.
Okay. All eyes?
Aye. Aye.
All right. All eyes carry, motion carries. All right. Now the good stuff. Legislation.
All right. First ordinance of the year, ordinance 01-2024. An ordinance imposing an immediate moratorium on the issuance and processing of permits allowing retail dispensaries, cultivators, or processors of adult-use marijuana within the village of Woodlawn and declaring an emergency. So we need a motion to suspend the rules.
Okay, I'm sorry. I'd like to ask for a motion to suspend the rules.
I'll make a motion to suspend the rules for ordinance 01-2024.
I'll second it.
All right.
Can I ask if we can have a little bit of that story or information to go in?
Sure. I'd be happy to. This has to do with, um, issue two that was approved, uh, under November 2023 ballot that legalized recreational marijuana within the state of Ohio. Following the passage, it became law on December 7th, 2023. And as part of the law, it established a Department of Cannabis, which, a Division of Cannabis, which is charged with, um, drafting and implementing regulations related to the issuance of permits to people who can, who can cultivate, process, and sell commercially recreational marijuana. Uh, that division has nine months from December 7th to, uh, put that in place. So what that means broadly is that, um, we don't know as a community what the rules and regulations will be for some time. In addition, the General Assembly has made some indication that it may seek to amend the law, which, uh, again, creates some uncertainty on what the, you know, when this actually is implemented, what exactly it's going to look like. Is it going to be exactly the law that the voters passed or will it be some modification of that law? Currently, within the village of Woodlawn, um, in terms of marijuana businesses, the village, uh, permits, um, I believe as a conditional use, uh, medical marijuana cultivation and processing. It would be permitted under our zoning code as a conditional use. However, there are no medical marijuana cultivators or processors within the village. It does not allow dispensaries. So the reason for this moratorium is that because there is some blocks and because we haven't, the village has not determined, um, how it wants to regulate this industry now that it has been expanded, the moratorium will maintain the status quo for a period of time that will allow, um, two things to happen. One, we understand, um, how the laws will impact the community. And two, um, it will give our, uh, council and our planning commission an opportunity to study and make decisions on whether, um, the recreational marijuana industry will be permitted, prohibited, or permitted with, um, um, conditions. So it really just hits the pause button. The moratorium will be in place through September 30th of this year. So the hope would be that within that time period, um, we, we will have some direction and know how we want to handle that type of business within the village.
Thank you. I just wanted that clarification for the public and anyone else to make sure that they understood.
But I have a question about that. So that means that if a retailer came to our village and they wanted to open one, this moratorium says not until after September.
Our, our moratorium says that we can, we will not issue any permits for any businesses that would cultivate, process, or sell recreational marijuana through September 30th. And they wouldn't get, uh, you know, if up and through that date, council determines it's not going to allow recreational marijuana sales within the village, they would not be able to obtain a permit ever.
And who has decided the importance of this in our village?
I don't understand the question.
Well, who has decided that this is something that we should do in our village? I mean, I know you're asking the question. You're gonna propose that before council, but who has put this forward that says that we don't want to do this in the village? I'm just really curious about this.
Well, this is based largely, um, in how the village has responded to marijuana industry, uh, the previous, when, when medical marijuana was approved within the state. And it's really not passing judgment on the law. It is really just giving council an opportunity to study and regulate the law if it chooses to do so. And in the meantime, until the Division of Cannabis drafts regulations, there will, there are no, there are no persons who are licensed to sell recreational marijuana within, uh, the, within any, any place in the state.
Okay. Ms. Starr, I saw your hand up.
Yeah, you mentioned recreational marijuana. What about medical marijuana? Do we need, are we allowed to permit, um, does cultivating, processing, and dispensing need for medical marijuana?
Yes. So currently, the zoning laws allow, as a conditional use, um, the cultivation and processing of medical, products from medical marijuana. We do not currently allow dispensaries for medical marijuana.
Just from my own understanding, the difference between processing and retail?
So there's three steps within the process. The first is the growing.
Right.
The second is taking the grown product and turning it into a product. And then the third is selling the product.
Oh, the process.
All right. So I believe, no, you're fine. I believe we had a motion and a second. The motion was seconded. Is that correct? All right. Uh, roll call.
Esther Bowie?
Aye.
Rosemary Brown?
Aye.
Cindy Chandler?
Aye.
Emma Fitzgerald?
Aye.
Robert Lawson?
Aye.
Michelle Star?
Aye.
Motion passed? Oh, okay. Thank you. All right. Roll call for, I need a motion for passage. Thank you. I'm jumping the gun here. I'd like to make a motion for passage.
I'll make a motion for passage for ordinance 01-2024.
I'll second it.
Actually, uh, Ms. Chandler made the motion, so we'll take yours as a second.
That's okay. That's okay.
She's magic.
All right.
Roll call, Esther Bowie?
Aye.
Rosemary Brown?
Aye.
Cindy Chandler?
Aye.
Emma Fitzgerald?
Aye.
Robert Lawson?
Aye.
Michelle Star?
Aye.
Make a motion for that? I'd like to make a motion to declare ordinance number 01-2024 an emergency. Roll call.
Esther Bowie?
Aye.
Rosemary Brown?
Aye.
Cindy Chandler?
Aye.
Emma Fitzgerald?
Aye.
Robert Lawson?
Aye.
Michelle Star?
Aye.
Didn't pass?
Yes.
Okay.
The next item is ordinance 02-2024, an ordinance establishing the road and sidewalk tax fund within the village budget.
All right. I'd like to ask for a motion to suspend the rule.
I'll make a motion to suspend the rule for ordinance number 02-2024.
Rosemary Brown?
Aye.
Cindy Chandler?
Aye.
Emma Fitzgerald?
Aye.
Robert Lawson?
Aye.
Michelle Star?
Aye.
Esther Bowie?
Aye.
I'd like to, um, make a motion for passage.
I'll second.
Roll call.
Rosemary Brown?
Aye.
Cindy Chandler?
Aye.
Emma Fitzgerald?
Aye.
Robert Lawson?
Aye.
Michelle Star?
Aye.
Esther Bowie?
Aye.
The next item is ordinance number 03-2024, an ordinance amending and replacing code section, uh, 20, uh, 220.01, establishing the rules of council for the village of Woodlawn, Hamilton County, Ohio.
Okay. I'd like to ask for a motion to suspend the rules.
I'll make a motion to suspend the rules for ordinance number 03-2024.
I'll second.
All right. Roll call.
Cindy Chandler?
Aye.
Emma Fitzgerald?
Aye.
Robert Lawson?
Aye.
Michelle Star?
Aye.
Esther Bowie?
Aye.
Rosemary Brown?
Aye.
All right. I would like to ask for a motion for passage.
I'll make the motion for passage for ordinance number 03-2024.
I'll second.
Roll call.
Cindy Chandler?
Aye.
Emma Fitzgerald?
Aye.
Robert Lawson?
Aye.
Michelle Star?
Aye.
Esther Bowie? Rosemary Brown?
Aye.
The next item is resolution number 01-2024, a resolution authorizing the village manager to enter into a facility usage agreement with Vacation Kids Camp LLC to operate a summer camp at the village recreation center.
What does roll? Okay. I'd like to ask for a motion for passage.
I'll make a motion for passage for resolution number 01-224.
I'll second.
Roll call.
Do we need roll call for that?
Oh, that's okay. I was, I was kind of watching you there, trying to keep up with you.
Emma Fitzgerald?
Aye.
Robert Lawson?
Aye.
Michelle Star?
Aye.
Esther Bowie?
Aye.
Rosemary Brown?
Aye.
Cindy Chandler?
No.
The next, uh, and that, that resolution passes, uh, the next item is resolution 02-2024, a resolution creating the positions of transportation supervisors, EMTB, and non-medical transportation driver in the fire department and approving job descriptions therefore.
I'd like to ask for a motion for passage.
I'll make a motion for passage for resolution number 02-2024.
I'll second it.
Roll call.
Emma Fitzgerald?
Aye.
Robert Lawson?
Aye.
Michelle Star?
Aye.
Esther Bowie?
Aye.
Rosemary Brown?
Aye.
Cindy Chandler?
Aye.
The next item is resolution oh-three, twenty twenty-four, a resolution authorizing the municipal manager to execute and record a notice of tax-exempt bond funding for Harmony Carton.
I'd like to ask for a motion for passage.
I'll make a motion for passage for resolution number zero-three, twenty twenty-four.
I'll second.
Roll call.
Robert Lawson?
Aye.
Jill Starr?
Aye.
Esther Bulway?
Aye.
Rosemary Brown?
Aye.
Cindy Chandler?
Aye.
Emma Fitzgerald?
Aye.
The next item is resolution zero-four, twenty twenty-four, a resolution authorizing the municipal manager to enter into a purchase-and-sale agreement to acquire certain property in the village of Woodlawn.
I'd like to ask for a motion for passage of resolution number oh-four, twenty twenty-four.
I'll make a motion for passage for resolution number zero-four, twenty twenty-four.
I'll second.
Roll call.
Michelle Starr?
Aye.
Esther Bulway?
Aye.
Rosemary Brown?
Aye.
Cindy Chandler?
Aye.
Emma Fitzgerald?
Aye.
Robert Lawson?
Aye.
Next item is resolution zero-five, twenty twenty-four, a resolution authorizing the municipal manager to enter into an agreement with Swim State Pool Management for swimming pool management services.
I'd like to, mm-hmm, go ahead.
So the contracted amount is a hundred and forty-eight thousand?
It is.
What was it last year?
It was, uh, and I can give you the exact number. It is around a hundred and twenty, but we added things to this contract, such as an additional lifeguard to watch the baby pool. Um, we added, um, additional operating hours, as well as some extended days, um, after Labor Day for adult use of the pool, which is, which are a couple of things that were asked about in the recreations analysis.
Okay, gotcha.
Any other questions in regard to this resolution?
I think it included also with longer concessions then, um, as well.
Yes, you are correct. Yeah.
Excuse me, did, uh, Swim State allows the concession offer?
They do.
Yes.
Yeah.
Did that just start?
No, um, we've done that the last three, three years, I believe.
We provide the supplies, am I correct?
We, we pay for the supplies, so actually, the, the pool management company goes out and acquires them at Sams, and we pay the Sams bill.
Okay.
Yeah.
They pay for the supplies.
Yeah.
They just run.
They just run it, yeah.
Okay. We're just taking a brief pause so that everyone has clarification on the resolution. Okay. All right, so, uh, did we make a motion? I'd like to ask for a motion for passage of resolution number oh-five, twenty twenty-four.
I'll make that with, uh, I'll make that motion. For her passage of that resolution, oh-five, twenty twenty-four.
I'll second.
All ayes?
Aye.
Roll call.
I'm sorry, roll call. I was jumping the gun.
Aye.
Rosemary Brown?
Aye.
Cindy Chandler?
Aye.
Emma Fitzgerald?
Aye.
Robert Lawson?
Aye.
Jill Starr?
And the last item is resolution zero-six, twenty twenty-four, a resolution applying the code of council that the village doesn't need for public records handling.
All right, I'd like to ask for a motion to approve resolution number zero-six, twenty twenty-four, and I will make that motion myself for passage. Is there? All right, roll call.
Rosemary Brown?
Aye.
Cindy Chandler?
Aye.
Emma Fitzgerald?
Aye.
Robert Lawson?
Aye.
Starr?
Aye.
Ms. Bulway?
Aye.
All right. We got through that. Beginning of the year, good stuff. All right, anything for new business? Anyone have anything for new business? At this time?
Yeah, we would need a motion for, uh, to go into executive session pursuant to section two-twenty-oh-one-G-three to discuss pending litigation, uh, with the village, uh, village law director.
I'd like to make a motion to go into, um, executive session under section two-twenty, zero-one, G-three.
I'll make a motion.
Motion.
I make the motion. That's okay.
I'll second that motion.
Roll call.
Esther Bulway?
Aye.
Rosemary Brown?
Aye.
Cindy Chandler?
Aye.
Emma Fitzgerald?
Aye.
Robert Lawson?
Aye.
Jill Starr?
Aye.
All right, we will go into executive session. Thank you all for coming out.
There'll be no action taken.
And there will be no action taken. Um, I'd like to thank the, the residents and our, our directors and employees for coming out tonight, and as always, thank you for those that have tuned in to watch the village council work on your behalf for the village of Woodlawn. Thank you. We can't until we come out of executive session.
You try, are you coughing? I didn't see you.